Thank you. Good evening. Just a quick reminder, we're welcoming people into our listening audience via Zoom. If you are in the listening audience, could you please remember to shut your video and your audio off? So we don't see you nor hear you, if that's possible. Okay, thank you. Good evening. We've already called the meeting to order before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening an open session. And per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting usually via Montague Community Television Broadcast Live. But this evening, we've learned that the Montague Community Television is broadcasting the Montague Select Board Meeting this evening. But this is being recorded and it will be available by tomorrow. I believe it will be uploaded. And I believe Tina Mahaney, our tech expert, is also working on a different way to be able to livestream it out into the public. We should be able to do that by our next meeting. That's in the works. And we also are welcoming people who would like to participate publicly. We have made policy BEDH. We reinstated it as a public participation held remotely. And I believe this evening, people notify Jennifer if they'd like to take part in that. And I believe this evening, Jennifer, we have one member, do we?
Yes, Carl DeJura would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Okay, Carl, good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. The Gil-Montague Education Association has previously stated, "The staff's determination to remain teaching remotely for the sake of everyone's safety until more certainty becomes available." Seventy percent of our staff members are at risk or have a family member who is at risk for serious outcomes if infected with the novel coronavirus. Tonight, we're asking the school committee members to consider the value of the alternative. Based on conversations with those who attended the workshop exploring the district's hybrid plan, students' hybrid experience will not differ much from remote learning, except for the complications arising from assembling large numbers of people in an enclosed space during a pandemic. Students at school will be in a Google Meet with their peers at home, and both groups will learn through the screen on their Chromebooks. Students at school will be masked, six feet away from peers, socially distanced during transitions, frequently washing or sanitizing their hands, eating with a small group of classmates in the classroom, and worrying about safety and hygiene in general. Pre-pandemic-style interaction will be minimal, and discomfort for those in school will be greater for them than for those at home. Many staff members have remarked that they are not certain the school committee or our families understand how similarly learning content will be delivered in the two modes. Given this similarity, the members of the association ask that you carefully consider the risks to everyone, and whether or not the benefits significantly outweigh the incompletely understood risks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we just have the one person this evening, right, Jennifer? And people are still reminded that if they would like to take part in public participation at any point in a meeting, they just need to let Jennifer know that ahead of time, and we'll make that possible. And people are also welcome to send email comments that they would like shared with the committee to Jennifer, and she will distribute those, as she has this week with some that were sent in. And we'll continue to have a live streaming option for staff and we're, I mean, we'll continue to work on the live streaming option when MCTV is not available. And we'll have a link for staff members to join in the, in the audience. Okay, thank you. Moving along, important events. That would be Brian.
So with this week, Monday, the, this past Monday, where the pandemic response advisory committee had typically met, had a regular standing meeting time on Mondays. When we moved the meeting back just slightly, there were some members who couldn't make it on Mondays, when the meeting went to six o'clock. And so, given the fact that yesterday was a holiday, it seemed like a good opportunity to make the move. So we've shifted the standing meeting to Wednesdays at 4:15 to 5:15 for the pandemic response advisory committee. And this week, there are a couple of different things that we'll have conversations about. The idea of, of contacted Franklin Regional Council of Governments, who in the past, for many schools, have helped facilitate the creation of a, of Safe Homes Networks, which would be publications that were put out, where people provided the opportu, or provided permission for their directory information, their phone number, their address, and so forth, to be shared. I've asked for FERCOG to assist us for the time that we're in, either remote or hybrid, until we're fully in school. Would it be possible for them to assist us in providing information about parents to other families who might be able to use that information to create learning pods to help with supervision in the neighborhoods? And, and close to home, so that that might take some of the, spread some of the load out over friends and family in terms of childcare for the difficult time that we're, you know, stuck in this place. That's one of the things that I'm sure will be an agenda item for this Wednesday. And, and, you know, how can we reach out to help private groups assist that coordination? And I'm just waiting to hear back from them to see if they can assist us with this. One of the other things that we need to take into consideration, I would ask if Joanne Blyer could step in to just give us a little summary of food service has changed. And even though we have to do some problem solving around the timing of the school day, Joanne, if we got some good news recently, if you want to share that with the committee, I'm not sure if we had shared that at the previous committee meeting or just at PREC.
Yes, the good news is that the USDA put out waivers so we can continue our summer meal service. So we won't have to charge the students from Gil for their meals. We won't have to only serve to students that come to our schools. We can serve to all students, just like we do in the summer. They're waiving the meal pattern requirements, and they're allowing parents and guardians to continue picking up meals. There's another meeting on Thursday where we're going to find out if we're going to be able to continue serving weekend meals. So we don't know about weekend meals just yet. So we're trying to come up with a plan on how we're going to be serving these meals. And it's going to either be two days or three days a week, beginning next week. The town of Irving, the Irving Elementary School is going to begin serving for the Irving towns. So we're going to drop them from our roots, and we'll just serve in Montague and Gil. And we'll hit all of the villages. So we're still working out the details, and we'll be putting something out as soon as that's available, hopefully on Thursday. But the, the complication is that mealtimes, in order for us to serve to all students throughout the community, we're serving for about a two-hour period. And when we're serving for a two-hour period, that's not the lunchtime that the students will have when they're in remote learning. So that causes some complication.
Thanks, Joanne. And I think that's our, our biggest challenge, you know, that is, challenge is going to be very different than it was in the spring, where we're trying to deliver a full curriculum while simultaneously trying to, to get this badly needed resource out to families. And as a school community, we'll have to be very creative.
Right. And I did, this week, it's Tuesday and Friday, they're being delivered. And we did get a lot of questions today about the schedule next week. But I reassured people that by Friday, there would be a schedule out, correct, Joanne?
Yes.
Yes, that by Friday, we'll be able to tell them which days and, and the times. But I told them we were working on it. We were definitely working on it. Okay. Jennifer, did I see your hand?
Yeah, sorry. So we did get an email about some food-related questions. And one was one that I've experienced, having some, sometimes we have excess food, which I have donated to our, our local food pantry. Sometimes there's things like boxes of raisins that my kids just refuse to eat. And I would hate to see that food getting wasted. So just wondering if there would be sort of a way that we could coordinate an effort to make donations of things that people are just not using before they're expiring. And then, so I thought that, that question coming up was, was worthwhile to, to explore. And then also regarding the, the pandemic pods, I think if we're going to go that route, where we're encouraging and supporting families to be able to do that, and work together, and come up with childcare plans, we're going to really need to be flexible and meet the kids where they are and, and what they need. And I don't know that that's traditionally the case, where you can, you know, say, get in your friend's class because it's easier for you to coordinate childcare and things like that. So I think there's a lot of trickle-down effects of things that, you know, we would have to do to support those kind of models. So we just need to keep that in mind, and we can have a conversation about that another time. But just sending parents' information is not necessarily going to be all they're going to need if they're going to work together on childcare and education.
Good, good point. Joanne, did you have something else about the food as well?
I don't think so.
Okay, I thought I saw your hand, but maybe you were just, like, moving.
Right, I think so.
And so to add on to Jennifer, one of the things that we also wanted them to help with, because we'll only be able to provide information as a district. We're not going to be able to provide coordination or encouragement in one way or another, but just let people know what's out there. Part of what I've also asked FERCOG to do is to provide us with advisories for parents and information on how to do it effectively and, and safely. And, you know, that's sort of just a starting point, is trying to find an outside organization who has far more extensive resources than just the school district. And those were, those are some of the things that they brought up as well. So they've already been helpful, just in terms of.
Yeah, and I'm sure they know the laws and the rules of, you know, you need a parent, or you could be considered a school if you have too many kids and licensure, things like that. So it would be nice to have parents get that information, because I think a lot of folks are trying to do this on their own, and they may not be aware of those, those legalities.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on either of those, Brian? Are we all set?
I think we're all set.
Okay. In that case, it's still you, because now it's a superintendent's report.
Oh, yeah, so this is unexciting, but if we get in the habit of doing it from time to time. So just providing an update, obviously, the state still remains in Phase 3, Step 1 of the opening, reopening since July 6th. According to the Weekly Health Report, Weekly COVID Public Health Report from September 2nd, which is the most recent and most updated one, the case counts in the district and abutting towns over the last 14 days leave Greenfield with seven cases, Bernardston with less than five, and Orange with five cases. All other towns of, all others of those 11 towns, including Gil, Montague, and Irving are at zero. In the state, there were 4,138 cases total over the last 14 days. And over the last 14 days in Franklin County, there have been 15 cases that have been identified. I also wanted to provide an update on the facilities work at this point. And this is the biggest reason is I've already had the opportunity to speak with school committee and put this in an email to each of you that I'm recommending that we do not vote tonight to change from a remote model. This week, the installation of physical barriers is expected to be completed throughout the district. And there may be a few more that we are waiting to have come in. Construction on, on the COVID isolation area at Gil Elementary is underway and should be completed by the end of the week. But the most important aspect of what's holding us up in the facilities area is the contractor is, is in and beginning the work to assess the HVAC systems and has begun to do repairs in each school so that the system is working correctly. Once, once those repairs are done, then they can begin the process of doing the assessment and the air balancing and make a determination as, you know, once everything's functioning correctly, what do we need for filtering and, and what's the best-case scenario for air to move in and out of each of the classrooms and each of the working spaces in the buildings? So that's underway. I do not believe it's going to be done by next week. It depends really on what they're able to provide us with regard to a summary by the time we get to the end of this week or early next week. And I'd like to ask them for an approximate timeline on, on when things would be done and bring that back to the next school committee meeting so that we have an idea of when we can expect, expect to be able to present another option to school committee for potentially getting kids on campus and into the buildings. And that's basically it for, for my report. You want to add, each of the principals have also sent out emails to families for Chromebook pickup times. I believe they started sending those out last week. And each of the schools have specific dates and times. I know the high school and middle school were sent out last week. And they'll begin tomorrow and Thursday. And I believe all of the elementary schools are doing theirs on Thursday, the 10th. Safe social distancing, drive-by, drive-through style. And that way, students will be able to get the technology that they need for the remote learning and pick it up before we start school on the 14th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Business and Operations Report, Joanne?
Okay, I wanted to give you an update on the building projects that we've been working on over the summer. The high school sidewalks have been completed. But we did go over budget. So what was discovered during the construction, when they pulled the curb out, it didn't just come out. It should have been just a skinny curb in the ground, should have come straight out. But it extended underneath the pavement. And it went, it was deeper. And so it ended up creating this huge hole in the ground that needed to be, the material needed to be disposed of, which added cost. And then they needed to backfill that hole that it created. So the cost ended up being about $22,000 more than what was budgeted. And we were in the middle of the project. And so we had to move forward with it. We couldn't just leave the sidewalk dug up. Graduation was coming. So we moved forward with that project. But I have a transfer that I'm going to ask for you to vote on, in my report here. The next project is the Gil Entryway. And so we were, the last I spoke to Heath, we were awaiting one more estimate for masonry work, because we're going to need to install a window there, like we did at the Hillcrest Elementary in the main office. But we also need to move the door over by about a foot. And that'll make room for the building code for the door swing area that's needed. So once we have all of those estimates, it should be a pretty quick project to get done. So hopefully, that'll be done before students come back. No-touch water fountains. We are ordering them for each of the schools. We'll replace, at the high school, for instance, I think we're going to have one on each floor, and then one on each floor in the middle school also. At Sheffield, we'll have one on each floor, one at Hillcrest, and we already have one at Gil. So that'll allow students to, no-touch, fill a water bottle. So those are on order. The high school BMS, this is another project that we have capital money from both towns for. And we went out to bid, but the bid came in higher than anticipated. And I believe the bid is from one of the vendors that had given us the original estimate that we based our capital project on. So we budgeted $80,000, and the bid came in at 105. So we have a couple of different options. We can go out to bid again and, you know, look at the specs and hope that the prices come in a little bit lower. Or we could go back to the towns and see if they're willing to put more money toward this project and then go out to bid again later. That'll push the project way out. Or we could use the general fund and cover the excess. So if you choose to do that, there's another transfer in your packet to cover that cost. Building condition studies, the building condition studies were approved by Montague for Hillcrest, Sheffield, and their portion of the high school. But we're awaiting Gil's town meeting to approve their portion of the high school and one for the Gil Elementary School. So rather than wait, we went out to bid for just the Sheffield and Hillcrest building condition assessments. The contractors have been to the buildings, they've toured them, and they are working on the reports. I have a little bit more information I still need to get off to them. But, you know, I'm hopeful that we can get those relatively quickly for Montague anyways. Green Communities was a town-funded grant for the town of Montague. And we did a retrofit of our lighting at the admin building. And so we have sensor, everything's been relamped and retrofitted with occupancy sensors. So if you sit still at your desk too long, your lights go out. Gil Electrical, the project is complete and everything's operational. We're just awaiting the final walkthrough. It's going to be in the next week or so. And some of that is funded with the insurance money from the flood, and some is funded by the town of Gil. The tractor, that's in our regular budget, our fiscal '21 budget. And so we're getting quotes, and we're hoping that we'll be able to move forward with the purchase on that soon. We have three quotes for, for the tractor that we need to replace our 2003 tractor. So those are the building projects that have been going on. We have more smaller projects, but I wanted to just give you sort of a summary on the larger projects that are happening. And there are those two that we have the overages on, so we have the transfers. We already talked a little bit about food service, so I won't repeat that. We should have more information on Thursday to get that plan out by Friday, when we're delivering the meals. And then the next thing I have is budget approvals in your packet. Not sure when I muted myself.
Oh, I, no, you were in, I thought I was not very stable for a minute or so there.
Okay.
We have three budget transfers.
Yep. Do we want to do those now, or do we want to wait until later in the agenda to do them?
I think this is where they are in the agenda. I think instead of putting them two places, we thought one place would probably do it.
Okay. So the first transfer is, for me, it's on a longer sheet of paper. I don't know how it came out for you. But this is transferring funds to cover the negotiable increases in staffing adjustments that we made for this year in fiscal '21. So there's a lot of numbers on here. There were some staffing adjustments that we were able to save some money here and there, and then some other larger increases that we needed to cover. So this should take care of most of the transfers for the negotiable increases.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Thank you, Haley. Second. Mike, thank you.
Ryan, you say most of them. You have a plan for the rest of them, I'm assuming?
There is, there is some more money in that fund. And, you know, once everything settles in, all the new hires are in there, then we'll be able to just take a look at it again and make sure that everything is covered. I, I believe that we're going to be all set with this. But sometimes, you know, there's a new hire here or there that, you know, bumped something up a little higher than I anticipated.
And just for people that aren't necessarily looking at the document, negotiable increases is a line item? And it then is applied where needed, is that correct?
That's correct. So the money is budgeted in a special line item, all the negotiable increases. And then we transfer it to teacher salary lines or the dean of student salary line, the middle school principal salary line, the various lines that people are paid from.
Right.
In some of the negotiations.
This is just the way the bookkeeping is. It isn't something new or different. The bookkeeping happens that way, correct?
We have done it.
Right. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, right, Mike? That was a second, I believe, and then a question also? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Timmy?
Aye.
Thank you. The second item is to transfer funds to cover the change order for the high school sidewalk project that Joanne explained. It's $22,835. And.
We lost you, Jane. We lost you, Jane. So the sidewalk project went over, as I explained. And so this would be enough funds to cover the excess costs that we need to pay from the general fund. These funds are also coming from that negotiable increases line.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? So moved. Haley, thank you. Second.
Second.
Heather. Heather, thank you.
Poor Mike.
Yeah, we'll give you a turn. Any other questions or comments on that? Transfer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, looks like everyone, thank you. And the third one is to transfer funds to cover the difference between the capital budget and the bid for BMS. Could you just remind us what BMS stands for, Joanne?
Yes, it's Building Management Systems. So this is the operational system at the high school that manages the heating, ventilation, and cooling.
Right. I knew that was the thing it referred to, but I didn't know what the words were. And it doesn't hurt to remind us what letters are.
Right.
So that is $25,610. I need a motion for that. Timmy, thank you. Second. Did I hear someone?
Mike seconded, I think.
Okay, he was quick to mute. I think I missed it. Okay, any questions or comments on that?
So this one, the funds are also coming from that negotiable increases line. And this will save us time. We'll be able to get moving with that project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like we have it unanimously again. Thank you. All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next on our list is the School Committee Reports, the warrant subcommittee approval. We have one accounts payable warrant. It is number 3106, dated 9/8/2020, in the amount of $295,119.08. And that is signed. I need a motion to approve it, having been signed.
So moved.
Okay, Haley, thank you. Second.
I don't.
Heather, thank you. Any other questions or comments about that? And again, accounts payable is just your basic bills that have to be paid. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, looks pretty close there. Timmy?
I guess I was still on mute. I'm sorry. Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on to business, we have some policies to look at. We have already looked at them twice, so this is our third look and discussion. And if acceptable, we will vote on them this evening, unless there's something that makes someone want to wait longer, which is fine. The first policy, the first two are related to the COVID-19. And these are basic policies that school districts have been putting in place so that changes are in one place. And it's not necessary to go through a large number of policies and change particular items in each one. This seems a good way to deal with it. The first one we're looking at is Policy EBC. It's a supplemental. The first one we're looking at is policy EBC. It's a supplemental to our regular EBC. It's emergency plans and interim policy for COVID-19-related issues. And again, this we've seen, and now we're seeing it again, and can take a vote if people would like to. I will entertain a motion to approve if someone would like to make it.
So moved.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Do we have a second?
I got it.
Second.
Heather, thank you. Any questions? Any questions or comments about that policy? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. The next one is EBCFA, which is a face mask policy, and this was, um, all of the policies that we initiate are, um, often they come as a recommendation from MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, which helps us to keep current. Then they're all reviewed by our law firm, the Dupree Law Firm, to make sure the policy is written in an appropriate manner and the wording is the best. This one, we also had some really excellent help with this. Melissa Benardzki, our nurse supervisor. Is there a special title, Brian?
Yeah, she's the pandemic nurse response leader.
Yes, okay. Um, she has done a lot of work on this, helping us put the policy together, checking with the local boards of health to make sure that, as well as following CDC guidelines, um, and, um, any other groups that are working on that, following DSA's recommendations. So this is now the policy as it stands, but today she also had sent us by email a suggested addendum. And if people would like to consider the whole policy this evening, I would be happy to read the addendum, or just let each of you read it on your own, whatever you prefer.
It was forwarded in an email. Melissa sent it to Jane and I, and I forwarded it just prior to the executive session tonight to the school committee.
Yes. It's a one paragraph, but I can also read it.
Thank you. Could you read it? I'm having trouble signing it.
Yes, I was gonna say, unfortunately, the whole thread came through instead of just, it's hard to do that sometimes. I was not able to make it work. It says, "Employees must wear a face mask at all times on GMRSD property, except when working in private individual offices, or classrooms, or in areas where they are eating and are separated by more than six feet from others. Masks must be worn in all common areas when not eating, regardless of ability to socially distance." Haley?
I heard, uh, working in private offices or classrooms, but I didn't hear the word alone, so I think, I think that might be important.
Right. Uh, that did occur to me. Um, the phrase alone, um, seemed to me to be a useful addition, and also, just from my perspective when I read it, to stop if we added the word alone after, either classrooms or after eating, and then I would also suggest we might think about deleting "and are separated by more than six feet from others", because I think the alone would cover it more accurately, and then it would not contain that part. But since...
Would we want to go so far as to say, "And the door is closed"? Having the door closed, being alone?
Melissa is also on the call, I believe. Is she still in here?
Okay.
If you have any questions of, of her and the intent behind the addendum?
Okay, I see a couple of hands. Um, I, my connection tonight is becoming unstable frequently, so if I am freezing, just, um, continue. Jennifer, I think I saw your hand, and then Heather's?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Melissa Benardzki for, uh, really working on this. Our, the draft we last saw, we had a couple of questions, and they have definitely been thoroughly addressed, um, and I, I'm, I'm just wanting to say thank you for the, the work on that. Make sure that we have a good policy in place.
Thanks. Heather? No, I, I think I saw one other hand. Melissa, is there anything you'd like to add, please?
Hi, yes, um, I'm happy to have worked on it, and I'm glad it answered the questions you had. And I do think you bring up some valid points that was a missing in the addendum. Yes, you should be alone in your room with the door closed, um, either office or classroom, and the intent for the eating is, I don't think they will be alone necessarily, so make sure they have at least six feet of space between, um, them.
Right, right. I think I did see that somewhere in here about the eating part. But I would have to look back because I don't have it memorized, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I think perhaps if it's acceptable, um, we will hold off on the vote till people have looked at the, uh, addendum one more time, and that way by our next meeting, it will have been a third chance, a discussion, a reading, and then another discussion. Is that acceptable? But I think otherwise, I think it's really an excellent document, and I think it does, it does a really good job filling in those gaps that we saw. Melissa?
Part of the reason for the addendum was, um, some concern for, um, teachers and staff members that were in their classrooms and offices alone, and felt they would like to have their masks off. I did consult with, um, some different, um, medical advice on that, and I went, I have the policy from Franklin Medical Center from our school physician, and they allow, inside their offices and rooms, when they're by themselves, they can have masks off.
That certainly makes sense, and it's a good thing to, I think, include for people to know that that's perfectly okay, safety-wise. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, in that case, we will add that policy with, um, a modified addendum by our next meeting, and we should be able to bring that to a vote. And again, thank you so much for working on that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, the next policy is the anti-discrimination harassment policy, ACAB, which is, uh, I believe just a slight modification to a policy that we already have in our handbook. There was just an update that, um, was made, so we try to keep up with the updates whenever possible. I need a motion to approve if that's the wish of the group.
So moved.
Okay, Haley, thank you, and?
Heather.
Heather, thank you. Any discussion about that particular policy? I would just make a note that the policy as it stands looks, again, very comprehensive, but what needs to happen, and I think we're, we would be allowed to do that, I think we'd be allowed to approve the policy as it's worded, with the understanding that on item Roman numeral three, where we have to designate officials, which we always have previously, we could approve it with the understanding that we would fill in the names and other information for the three coordinators that need to be included in that particular policy. Okay, if that's acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, given that, those parameters.
I'll move it.
Okay, Bill?
I'll second Haley.
Okay, thank you. Bill and Haley, any discussion, questions, comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, thank you. The, um, Ryan has for us some, um, review and potential vote on COVID-related handbook addendums. Do we have those? Or not?
No, not for tonight, but this'll probably be a standing item, uh, once the face mask policy is approved. I just want to add an addendum to the handbook, and obviously students are not coming on campus yet, but, uh, indicating that if a student refuses to comply with, uh, safety protocols, that they'll be re-prompted, and, you know, there'll be a process that they'll go through. Ultimately, if they can't, their parents will have to come and pick them up, and they will go to the remote classroom rather than being suspended from school. And so, um, we, you know, we have language on that, on that, that I need to run by. We have had discussions, discussions with councils, um, and also with other school districts. Uh, the other thing that I need to work with council on is, uh, and be able to provide clarification for teachers around, if they need to remove a student from the classroom for being disruptive, or for some reason inappropriate while we are in remote, they have to know that that would constitute a suspension if it were done for more than one class period in a day, and so when a kid is removed for an entire class period, it's gonna need to be reported like it, like a, as though it were a suspension, the principal's gonna have to, need to be made aware. And so, I don't think that will become a matter of policy that will come to the school committee, but I'll, I'll make the school committee aware of what the practice is, um, once it's defined and run by council.
Okay, so that will be an agenda item on our next agenda. Okay, thank you. Um, we also have another policy. EEAA is our transportation policy, and again, this, we have discussed it previously, but we need to see if people are interested in, um, amending it, changing it, or keeping it as it stands. There's a copy of it in our packet this evening, and, uh, maybe Joanne will just refresh our memory. Sometimes it gets a little vague about the reason that we're looking at this again.
Yes, so I just want to get to it. So, our policy says that we bus students one and a half miles to school, anyone who lives one and a half miles or more from school. However, kindergarten gets bused if they live within half, or beyond half a mile. So that creates some confusion under normal circumstances, because, you know, parents put their child on the bus for kindergarten, and then when they're six years old and they're going to first grade, they're no longer eligible for the bus. But they're really not old enough to walk to school alone, and so they don't understand why we're busing the kindergartner, but not the first grader. So it's that language that would, it would create more complications now, as we're trying to have fewer kids on the buses. You know, somebody has two students, they have a kindergartner, and they have a first grader, they can put one on the bus, and they can't put the other one on the bus. So it would, it would help to simplify that language. This has been here for a long time, the half-mile language, and there's nothing in our regulations that say, like in the state regulations, that say kindergartners get a bus, but the first graders don't. So the state reimburses us for anyone over one and a half miles, and they require that we transport students who live more than two miles from the school. They don't require the one and a half mile requirement. They only require two miles.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts on that? Haley?
So, um, I think I can support changing this policy, not enthusiastically, because I, I really just wish the state would reimburse us for more transportation rather than less, and that we could provide more. I would personally love to be busing elementary students who lived more than a half mile away from school as a whole, but unfortunately, we're not getting reimbursed for that. Transportation is a major expense for us. And I, I understand the point that it just, for consistency's sake, you know, if we have a kindergartner and a first grader who are siblings, it doesn't make sense that the kindergartner can take the bus, but the first grader can't, and how do you turn that first grader away at the bus? So, I will support this, but, uh, you know, I, I, I object to the state that we can't just transport everybody.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Oh, I was just giving Haley the thumbs up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Haley. Point, well, well taken.
So the state doesn't say that we can't transport these kids. The state says that's what they're gonna pay for, and so we stay within their guidelines, so that way we get the most reimbursement we can to help pay for those buses. But the state never, they would never say you can't transport the kids. They, they say, "Transport all the kids you want. You pay for it. We'll pay for anybody over the mile and a half."
Right. Well, and, and as a point of reference, they say that, but then each year our reimbursement percentage from the state is not 100%
No.
if we follow the rules. It's usually between 60 and 70%, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, yeah, it's been higher recently, a little bit higher, but 70% is a pretty good number. And I, I have to wonder if this, this language for the kindergartners was in there from when kindergarten was a half-day program. And so the buses were out midday, and that's why they bus them differently.
Ah.
I don't think so.
No, Bill?
No, I think it's more tied to when you had schools outside of sidewalked areas. It directly impacts Gill, and it would have impacted Montague Center more than Montague, uh, more than Turner's Falls, Montague City, even Miller's Falls. So it's, it's more of a rural accommodation. I think in the past, you're right, Joanne, it's been there for a long time, 30 years by my memory. And in terms of reimbursement, the state has never, ever paid 100% like the original law says. So you're all correct. My question is, though, how are we being impacted by picking the kids up? Does it, does Cosmesus count children, count number of pickups? How is it affecting our, our transportation budget?
So, we get a bill per bus, so we pay about $400 for the bus every day. And then, we have to look at the riders that are on that bus, and we report, I have to report each year to the state to say, "Who are the riders on the bus?" So I set the schedules with Cosmesus. I report to the state, "Who rides that bus?" There were, you know, let's say there were 60 kids that rode that were eligible for transportation, and 40 that rode that were not. I have to take the cost, 40% of that cost off before I can submit for reimbursement.
So each bus is divvied up by the number of, uh, pa, number of pickups, right?
The number of heads. It's a head count.
Yeah, okay. So there is a direct impact in terms of the amount of cost that you can submit to the state, because you're picking up extra kids inside a certain zone.
Yep.
Thanks.
And I've, I've done this calculation in different ways, where I've used head count to do it, and I've also done the calculation where I look at the mileage. So every single student's mileage from the school to their home, and, and done the tracking that way. It's a very complicated way to do it, but it actually saves us some when we do that. And then the other thing about picking up every single student, that would require more buses. You know, if we were to bus everybody within the half mile, we would have to add at least two buses, maybe three.
Cool.
Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make a motion to, change the policy.
A move that we eliminate picking up kindergarten kids a half-mile from school. All students will now be eligible to ride within, outside of a mile and a half. How's that?
Okay, so we would omit the kindergarten line, looks like. Is that correct?
Yes, and you would have to change that elementary line to be K through 6.
K through 6, absolutely, right.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Bill, we have a second from Haley. I did take the discussion first because I wanted to see if there was any interest in changing it. Any more discussion or questions? Mike?
Yeah, I would, uh, stay with the language at and outside, just because that's the way it's stated now. But otherwise, I'm all for it.
Okay, yep. Point, because that, right, that makes a determination. Timmy?
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I, I wondered if you had a question or comment?
I thought when you called my name, you wanted to vote for some reason.
Okay, well, I'm getting to it, but with this little Zoom thing, edges light up and that gets my attention. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, sorry. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of changing the policy, please indicate with a hand or say aye. Now, Timmy, aye, okay, looks like it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next item is discussion and potential vote on the transportation contract that we're signing for this year. Joanne, that would be you again.
No contract yet. I'm going to be working with the attorney tomorrow, and so we'll bring something to your next meeting.
Okay, then we will add that to the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, information on communication, I think, Brian?
Can I just have one more quick busing question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
For Joanne, I'm just curious to know if, if you're having a response from folks to sign up for the bus, so we can predict, you know, how many students are actually going to take the bus versus elect to get driven by family, um, you know, with the new restrictions and having one student per seat. You know, if you think we're, if you anticipate us having to add buses, maybe you don't have all those answers right now, but you can get back, because I just wonder how much it's going to affect our budget.
Yeah, with the number of survey responses we got, no, we would not have to add buses. I think that we can put that survey back out again and see if we can get more responses, because we, we just didn't get very many.
We just might not know till they show up at the bus stop?
Yeah, but they're going to need a list, because for part of the, you know, contact tracing, we're going to need a list of who's on the bus. So they're going to have to be registered, and we're going to create bus lists, bus lists based on the students that sign up. So, I think, you know, we can put an announcement back out there now to say that that link is still available, we can send it back out to families and see if we can get more responses.
I guess until we have a date that we're actually in person, and there's not a lot of urgency on, on the parent end to figure that question out, but there, there is for, on our end, so.
Right, and some people are, are, they're unsure. You know, they're, they're unsure if they want to put their child on a bus to go to school, because they don't know what the circumstances are, they don't know what, what will be happening when we do reopen, so. You know, they're just not sure how to answer the questions even.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion then to put it out again, and, and perhaps if things are looking like they're changing even again after that, perhaps when that happens.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Next item, information on communication. Brian?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to really help families, to become aware that there's a lot of information that's going to come out over the next couple of days, and we're going to try and distill it down so that it's, you know, more one-pagers on, um, connecting with school. I wanted to let people know, and the email that I sent out today, that there's going to be a delay on committing to the daily schedule by a few days, because I've asked, uh, after the first few days of school, where teachers had completed their training and, um, had an opportunity to work with the technology, and we began to lead meetings with our staff, that we, we effectively, as, as educators, had the opportunity, to effectively see what a day is like to be a remote learner. And for those of you who have been in various meetings, we've kind of been doing that all along, and for you guys that have been working jobs remotely. And it's a challenge, and I wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to take a look at the, the draft daily schedules that, that are in plans for each school. And we're going to continue to have ongoing conversations about how we might make those better over the course of the year. And I needed for, for people to just hear from me directly that, we're going to be flexible, you know, and, and trying to make things work as well as we possibly can. And we're not going to be adverse or opposed to ideas, hearing them, vetting them, trying to see whether or not that might be a better circumstance for, for kids. And if we do that with a degree of consistency, it's going to require that we communicate much more frequently, that we give adequate lead time to parents, and that we do everything we can as a school community to make sure that we're getting responses from, from families that, and groups of families that might be underrepresented in their responses since we've gone remote back in March. You know, we've done several surveys and, and, you know, as of yet to date, we've not gotten 743, or 943 total responses out of any of those surveys. And so I think it will be really important for us to keep groups like, the Response Advisory Committee up, to take a look at other groups in, in the, the community who might help us to be able to better understand how frequently we need communication and combine this with the things that have worked well. For example, the newsletters that come out on a regular basis from the principals, and be, for me, being able to understand what they attempt to communicate and try, for me, I appreciate the assistance of members of the school committee in helping me to sift down my communications and prevent them from being like five-page documents that nobody wants to read through. That's been very helpful, and, and that information needs to keep coming, because the only thing that I'm focused on right now, other than pandemic plans, really is getting communication out to families as, as quickly as we can, including, you know, sending the email out today to say, "Yeah, you know what, we're not ready to send out daily schedules, and this is the reason why." So principals will be doing that a little bit later on in the week, and while we recognize that if they plan for those first schedules that were in there as a family, then they'll, they'll be best prepared, because anything that might come out of that would be a little bit more consolidated as opposed to being over the entire day. And, um, really, for us, being able to constantly take a look at, you know, what it's like for a student in the remote environment, how much time are they spending on screens? What's reasonable, what's appropriate? What are things that just aren't going to work live, and how can we get manipulatives out to them? And, and that's going to require that we communicate with families to get thing, other things into the hands of our students as quickly as we possibly can. So I just want to make sure that everybody has an understanding that, you know, we're making a commitment to communicate, and that's not a one-way street. If there are things that we need to be doing a better job communicating about, I expect to hear it not just from the school committee, although you guys have been very helpful in providing direction and, and support and ideas. But I've also been appreciative of other families who have contacted myself or their principals, or their teachers, to let them know that there are other things that they need. So I just want to make sure that that feedback loop is going to stay open, um, and that people need to have an understanding that things could change very quickly, um, as we get rolling during the school year, and hopefully always for the better. But I just wanted people to have an idea that some communications will come out very quickly, and, and not with as much lead time as families may like or need. And to ask for patience in that regard, because it's not a matter of us just sitting around and not having something ready. We had stuff ready, and we decided to go back to the table to take a look just for a couple of days, based on our own experience, integrating the feedback that we got from families twice now about remote learning and their ideas around hybrid learning, and I, I feel like it's been very helpful. And on Wednesday afternoon, I'll have an opportunity to follow up with the principals on, on where they're at, and what are we ready to send out to families with regard to the start of school on Monday, so that they have clarity.
Haley?
Thanks, Brian. I think that's all really important stuff. One suggestion I wanted to make was just to acknowledge how hard it can be to keep track of what's a parent meeting, what's a kid meeting, especially if you have multiple kids in different classrooms. And if there was, you know, I don't know if this is possible on our website, but maybe if each class could have a page where you can just go and see, um, you know, when you're supposed to be meeting, and whether it's a kid meeting or a parent meeting or both. I have, you know, three kids, and my, my phone is full of calendar updates and alarms going off to, to mark all of these meetings, and, uh, it's just a little hard to keep track of. It'd be good if there was a central space.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer?
I've also gotten several questions from parents about scheduling, and I know that it was in the large document, um, about the reopening plans, and it was kind of buried in, like you had to look for your school, but there hasn't been something sent out specifically from each school with a sample schedule. So I think that that's, the confusion is that some, some folks missed that that was in that very large document. So I think, you know, that's a starting place to get an idea, but again, it's just a draft, and it is going to change over the next couple of days. So it might be kind of a moot point at this point, but, yeah, and just hearing, you know, not in such a big cumbersome way to find that information, make it as easy as possible, um, would be great. And then, you know, there's still questions that parents have, like, what if my kid has, you know, if I have a kindergartner and a first grader, and they have specials at the same time, is one having art and one having PE at the same time? You know, parents are looking for answers as to, you know, what are we going to do about these things? So, um, you know, parents are just trying to figure out what their day is going to look like and where they're going to fit the rest of their life in. So, yeah. We're working on it.
Yeah, no, and I think that, that's the kind of feedback that will be important for, for teachers and principals to, to hear about, in particular, because many of those circumstances will be different, at a building level, you know, more than, more than the district level, but that information can come back, and the elementary principals can, can coordinate as they work very well with one another, to pass those concerns on also, even though they might not be appearing in other schools, to begin to problem solve and hopefully come up with a, with a solution that works best for the kids and for the family.
Okay, anything else about that? Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brian. Next is a discussion on reopening plans and vote to consider changing learning modes, models. That's you also, Brian?
Yeah, so I had mentioned in my report, earlier, that I cannot, at this particular point, make a recommendation that the school, you know, I, I don't feel, um, that it would be safe to present the school committee with the option of hybrid or, uh, having students on campus in, in substantial numbers right now, given the work that needs to be done in terms of, um, getting the physical barriers, the remaining physical barriers in place. Any signage that needs to be taken care of still needs to be addressed before students are on campus in slightly larger numbers. And the work that needs to be done on the ventilation system. So, uh, because of that, I know that there has been, you know, there have been some conversations, I have had some conversations with members of the community and with members of the, of the school committee, that, you know, for us as an administrative team, we're going to have to go back to the table with one another and develop some plans, in particular, to bring for September 22nd with regard to priority populations, and also looking at even smaller, potentially smaller cohorts of students in the hybrid. For example, the idea of, um, potentially coming in in quarter cohorts. And then, you know, there have been some other conversations about just creative ways to get kids on campus, and, and, you know, before any of those conversations, the conversations can all happen, happen in a meaningful way. I think largely outside of the committee until something, you know, comes back to the admin team where we can say, "Oh yeah, we can make that happen," or, "No, that's impossible, that's just not going to work." But there are a lot of good ideas out there, and I think that it's important that we as a group be open to considering as we go, listening to parents, listening to teachers, in some cases, listening to students about what might make their experiences better. And hopefully on the 22nd have the opportunity, if the facilities are in shape, to have the committee consider doing something different than remote. I do also want to say that we've, we're working on having a very low metric, although I did give a summary of where the data is in Massachusetts at, at this particular point, in particular in Franklin County, which I'll do at each meeting going forward, that, um, we don't necessarily, we're not able to even consider the fact that we're, we're relatively low. I, I do want to share that, you know, we have been talking about having a low metric, a low threshold, uh, to decide to go, to get more students on campus. And I just wanted to be able to share that with the community, that when those decisions are made, they're going to be made because our buildings are safe, and, um, the thresholds for our decision-making are, are considerate mostly of the safety of families, including the families of, of students and the, our, our teachers and their families.
Thank you. Anything for Brian? Jennifer?
So when we were talking about, um, possibly making a decision this evening, you were looking at a date of October 5th, so if we're pushing to the 22nd for the decision on the, whether the next phase happens, what would that be also pushed out? Just to give families a little heads up, um, as to how long we could be fully remote and when it may or may not change.
Yeah, it should be roughly three weeks, um, from the time the decision is made, and that will allow us to be able to, you know, refine anything that we need to in terms of the, the students and their schedules for being on campus, what their schedules like, look like off-campus. Arrange and staff up, or ensure that transportation can be staffed up. And hire the remaining positions that we'll need, such as the, CNAs that are going to be staffing, that the, uh, COVID suspected waiting rooms, where parents will be coming to pick them up. So there is an increase in staffing that will be required when we have students on campus. And so that turnaround time will give us the opportunity to get those postings out, if we haven't already, and get the buildings appropriately staffed. And I, so I think that, that next date would be October 12th. So we would move from the 5th to the 12th, I believe.
Haley?
I just wanted to hit on, um, my understanding of what hybrid means. And, um, I think that there are a lot of different possible iterations of hybrid, from half the districts coming in two days, twice a week, down, you know, that would be the most, to, down to, you know, just priority populations or Chinese. And then many, many things in between. I think that there may be a perception out there that hybrid equals synchronous learning. You know, that, that it would, it would be the same as remote, but, you know, you'd just be in, happen to be in the classroom if you're in a, in a hybrid in-person situation. But I think we need to consider that it may not just be synchronous. And the reality is that we, if we want to provide specialized instruction for small groups of students, that we, to do that, we need to go into hybrid. Is that true?
No, I, I think there is, you know, at the, at the state level, and coming from DESI, in particular, in addressing priority populations, all schools should really be making an effort to get those populations into contact with teachers as soon as is, uh, really possible, because those are students who are going to benefit the most from being in touch with their teachers, they're the ones who are most prone to regression over the period of time since March, as, um, as that time has gone by. And so a hybrid can be synchronous or asynchronous. And so a hybrid can be synchronous or asynchronous. It's not necessarily defined as something that's a rigid number of days for each student, but really anything that has a student learning in a combination of being at home and doing some work or having some connections through their computer with their educators. And some time on campus that they're spending with their teachers or support staff, really all of that falls into hybrid. So I think that that's an important distinction to make is, you know, while we say this is our hybrid plan and we've clearly defined it, we've, we've, uh, we've defined our plan as many other schools have to start as sort of that 50-50 plan where we have a Monday, Tuesday group, a Tuesday, Thursday group. School's going to close on Wednesday for a big cleaning where everybody will be remote. So even while we are, we are in hybrid, as Carl had mentioned earlier, that a significant portion of that will be remote. And on different days, teachers will have the opportunity because the, our technology allows them to do synchronous learning. But there may be times when it's more beneficial for those kids who are there to have kids at home be in an asynchronous model on a given day, which means they might not have that direct contact, but there'll still be expectations. So I think all of these, the implementation of any one of these models is really going to require teachers to become skilled with the technology, rely heavily on, um, their colleagues for that support, stick, stick, keeping up with communication, um, so that they're able, best able to handle both synchronous and asynchronous types of learning and can make distinctions and, and judgments about, well, this kid in front of me right now is going to be best served by me not doing this synchronously. But I, I need, so it, it impacts their planning, like I need to have something set up. So I, I think for everybody, it's going to be, you know, in every school district across, across the state and many areas of the state, it's going to be a learning experience, whether we're in hybrid or remote. It's going to be a learning experience and we all have to learn from one another. But I think that's an important distinction to make. I mean, hybrid is anything that we're doing partially in person and, and partially remote.
Jennifer?
So from what you were just saying, I'm understanding that there is going to be a degree of discretion on the teacher's part for allowing for some change in those schedule or plan and flexibility. Or it's not going to be a rigid, if it's not working for someone, they can make adjustments?
Yeah, the, the expectations that we're working on or that we've worked on, you know, and that principals have worked with their teachers on and are in conversations with their teachers about how they envision this happening. I mean, these are the first couple of days that we've had the opportunity to have those conversations once teachers came back. I think teachers are wary of too much screen time for kids. I think they also recognize that the opportunity exists within given class periods to provide adequate direction and screen time for entire groups. But they also want to be attentive to the opportunity that they have to have small group instruction or individualized instruction and limiting screen time for other students during that time will allow them to be able to provide that type of support. So there are some trade-offs that are there that I think it will be up to, um, up to individual teachers with some, you know, some recommend, recommended parameters. But just like on any other day, you know, we're not walking into classrooms and saying, you're going to spend 40 minutes on this and do it this way and do it this way. There's got to be a lot of latitude for teachers to be able to make those decisions and continue to collaborate with one another and, and be talking to us about, well, it's just not effective or this is way too much time for the kid to be, you know, I, I had to do this lecture for 65 minutes the other day in a high school class. That's not going to work. So I think there has to be a decent amount of latitude for teachers. And if we see, you know, that we're not getting enough out of it, then, then we'll have to continue to evolve. At this particular point, I'm not concerned about that. What I'm concerned about is a kid being on the computer all day long as, as a primary concern. And I think teachers are concerned about that as well and they want to make sure that they strike the balance between delivering a full curriculum with support and simultaneously making sure that it's not done in a way that a kid's going to become a screen-driven noodle by the end of the day. So, excuse me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Um, the last item under business, we, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I raised my hand lastly. Uh, I just wanted to touch on the last thing Brian said. And just say, I hope we're considering also that, and I say this as I've spent like eight hours today on the computer and then had a meeting, that we're not making the teacher's brain, you know, wet noodle sitting on the computer all day either.
Good point. Thank you. Uh, last item under business is equity among schools. We like to keep referring to this to make sure we're becoming aware of it and staying aware of it. Anyone have anything under that item they'd like to bring up this evening? Jennifer?
Not necessarily equity among schools, but I think we need to keep revisiting the conversation about the dissolved equity committee and just get a bearing, I mean, where we left off. You know, I think it's, as the time goes by, I just don't want that to slip through the cracks. And I appreciate that we've had equity among schools on the agenda. But I just want to make sure that that committee, um, you know, doesn't stall out. Although it was dissolved, we never really got any official documents or anything to know where they left off or what was maybe discussed. And there might be some real topics in there for us to dive into if we, you know, for future agendas. Um, so just, I kind of would like to get a bearing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that was not, that committee was not under the auspices of the school committee per se?
Yeah, I know.
I think that, that's why we really haven't had any definitive information and they have since disbanded. But we could see, you know, if there was a way we could.
If there's anything that is out there for information that we could just, you know, maybe have a, a working session or come up with a subcommittee or, you know, we've talked about different ideas. I just want to make sure that, um, the work doesn't stall. We have a lot on our plates with COVID, but we started some good work and, um, you know, talking about equity among schools is yes, important, but this is also important that we don't let it slip through the cracks. We've made a commitment to it.
Haley?
I just wanted to recognize that maybe, um, some of our likely volunteers for an equity committee might be pulled off to the police task, um, committee that's going on right now.
But yes, we won't, won't let it fall off the radar though. I think it is important to keep, keep it at the forefront and then, you know, as soon as possible when people have, are able to take a breath.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe they had ideas about topics within equity among the schools, but you know, I don't know. So, um, but it's, it's sometimes it's hard for us to think of, think of everything. So.
Right, good point.
Be a good starting place for some of these conversations.
Mike?
It started with a bunch of listening sessions, uh, and those are all documented. And, uh, there was a lot of input from the facilitators. So that would be a good place to start, just to revisit that. I mean, not necessarily in a meeting, but to redistribute that amongst all the school committee members and let that generate some of the discussion because there was back and forth and there were, uh, you know, goals discussed and potential actions discussed, uh, right up front. I mean, the committee itself didn't really make much progress from there, but that was good work as, as Jennifer pointed out and that would be a decent place to start.
Good idea, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the last item we.
Jane, you faded again.
Motion to approve the minutes. All of them at once?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is it acceptable to consider them all three together? Did, Cassie, while I was momentarily becoming communicatively unstable, uh, did we have a motion or a second?
One of each.
Mike motions and Bill seconded.
Thank you. Good job. And I didn't see any need for discussion apparently. So all those in favor, please indicate. Okay, Kimmy?
Hi.
Thank you. We have a unanimous approval of the minutes? If any.
A blast from the past.
Yes, well, life moves slowly and quickly nowadays, so we have some of each. We will keep, um, I'm keeping a record of anything that we've said we want on our future agendas, but also if anything occurs to any members, please let, uh, Cassie, myself or Brian know. We generally meet, um, on Monday or Tuesday of the week before the next meeting. And, um, if I see no hands at the moment, I guess our scheduled next meetings will be September 22nd, October 13th and October 27th. Okay.
Motion to adjourn while she's frozen. Bye.
Any discussion?
I'm just going to have to move. That's the.
All those in favor?
Looks like we're all okay with it?
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
See you later.
Bye.